We have to turn off like the middle when they do that. Okay. That one's not now. When they through their. What? No, no, that's when it's cut off. It's by the presentation. Now, these are the two girls after. Do that presentation a little bit. Oh, yes. I could. I could because of nature.
He didn't tell me.
Okay. I think we're ready. I'm sorry. You ready, Mr. Mayor?
Ready, Ross.
Give me a second. Uh, yep.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the April 28th, 2025 Borough Council meeting to order. Will a clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual notice schedule to the official newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Here.
Councilman Collins. Councilman Manko. Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignola.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Present.
Borough Engineer Lupuskanka.
Present.
Borough Administrator Frederick Carr.
Yes.
Borough CFO Joseph Zanga.
Here.
And Borough Clerk Monica Orlando here.
Thank you.
Well, everyone please stand for a moment of silence, which will be followed by a simple flag.
For the citizens of America, who came from America, this is the Republic, which stands on the nation, on the ground, in its rightful, liberty, and justice for all.
So before we start the meeting, I'd like to remind council that we should remain professional, and I will not want any more, uh, anyone causing public disturbance moving forward, please. So we have a presentation for Girl Scout Troop 80270, ladies.
Um, being passed around to you right now is a presentation that we created to basically get the little bit of the idea of the Pollinator Garden that we have in mind of creating near the senior centers, senior centers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, The Pollinator Garden 2025 Silver Project by Ally Mayko. Um, a question a lot of people might be asking right now is what is a pollinator garden? And it's basically a garden that gives food and resources to animals that can help better the environment around us. And it provides essential habits for bees, hummingbirds, and butterflies. Or those are like some examples of them. Um, they offer a variety of nectar and pollen sources, and they support the survival of declining pollinator populations, sorry.
Soil stability, prevent soil erosion, improve soil structure, helps with water rotation. A stable soil ecosystem supports diverse plant life. So in these pictures you can see is when it rains, the water pools and with the flowers being there, it will absorb some of the water and stop it from pooling.
Pollinator garden, um, using native plants. We plan to have like lots of wildflower mix, and we've done lots of research of plants that are going to actually help the environment more. And like we're native to New Jersey. And, um, we will supplement, oh, sorry, supplement with annual flowers as well. So those are flowers that come back like every single year. Um, and you don't always have to plant them back again. Um, we will renovate some of the planters as well, and we're planning to extend six feet from like the current area around the senior center. And we're going to create like a barrier with rocks to stop, um, like to split it from like the rest of the grass and the flowers. And we plan to have like two days of work. And plants will be donated, like plants will be donated, and we'll supplement with troop funds. And so we plan to ask some like places like Rutgers or Home Depot to have some donations. We started to write letters to them to help us with that. And in our past, we have done that before, and they have been willing to help. And if we're planning to get more flowers or like rocks with the money that we are used, we use, thank you.
Maintenance of the garden, regular work, and reading is essential. And we will probably have people like, we'll probably go like maybe once or twice a week and go water the plants unless it rains. And then we use organic methods to manage pests. We'll monitor plant health and pollinator activity as well.
Educational opportunities. Um, we could like educate the community. We plan to, yeah, during Milltown Day, we plan to set up a booth during one of the Girl Scouts events. If some people know they do have a Girl Scout booth, we plan to have some time to talk to anyone who's willing to listen and educate them about this so they can also learn and maybe do something like this one, uh, like one day too. And then, yeah. Thank you for your consideration. Are there any further questions that we can hopefully answer?
Yes, one quick one. So, um, I know that you mentioned you were going to go to Home Depot and maybe some other places in town for, um, donations. Uh, what if a resident wanted to just donate money so you could, it could help you like support some of that? Is that possible?
That is possible.
Yeah.
Who would, who would, how would, how would you facilitate that? Would you cash, make out a check?
You could make a check out to the troop, and then we make sure that they get some of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, any other questions?
I have one. Uh, what kind of stone materials will you be using for the border?
Probably just like regular like rocks that you can find like pretty much like anywhere. Like, like this size.
We're planning to have bigger to like create more of a border. If you look around like the flag post by the senior citizens.
There's bricks there.
Yeah, there's like kind of bricks. We're planning on using those to like make a wavy effect to make it a little prettier. And we're supposed to have it like cut by color order. So we're going to have like red, blue, all those colors.
Okay, if you need, uh, stone material, I'd be happy to donate all the stone materials.
Thank you so much.
I have a question. Um, when do you plan on starting this project?
Um, Memorial Day weekend.
And we do have a rain day that is not working out too. Yeah.
Perfect. So, Peter, is there a way, uh, like our other, actually, it's on a resolution today. The Girl Scout that came to one of the, uh, who, can we do a resolution, uh?
You can have a resolution on for next meeting if you wanted to endorse this project. Anybody have any objections?
No. No.
And I'm sure Councilman Manko probably would not have an objection as well. Um, so I think that, I think we're good. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now is the time for public comment, limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Again, this is the public portion is limited to the comments only under resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There will be a five-minute limit, time limit, as set forth by the rules of the council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close audience comments. Ordinance introduction first raised with pleasure. This is an introduction to ordinance 251559. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by the law, and a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered at the May 12th, 2025 meeting. Full copies of this ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board of, at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Monday through Fridays. Will the clerk please read ordinance 15, I'm sorry, 251559 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 14 Parks and Recreation, Section 6 Borough Pool, subsection 6.3 Fees in Section 7 Recreation Programs, subsection 7.2 Fees. Arrived general ordinance of the Borough of Milltown County, Middlesex State of New Jersey.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second. Uh, I have a motion made by Councilman, uh, Potter, seconded by Council President Zambrana. Uh, is there any, uh, comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman May, oh, sorry. Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 25, 2025-154 by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown. The total amount of $2,277,751.62.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Uh, is there any questions?
Yes, I got a question here. This is on page five. I just a quick question for, it says that's for affordable housing, right? That's what it say for, uh, Heller, Brewer Associates?
Yes.
Martin? So, Mr. McNoah?
They're our planner. They're our planner.
Yeah, that's our planner. And we're paying for affordable housing. How come we're paying for affordable housing?
Well, because you have a fourth round obligation that you need to plan for prior to the end of June, and currently your planner is in the process of identifying locations and, and the numbers and how to satisfy that.
I don't understand. How, how are we paying? I mean.
Well, because you are a municipality, you have an obligation to come up with a plan for your fourth round of affordable housing.
But I'm saying like you live in an older home. I live in an older, we're both in over 50-year-old homes, and we have to pay for somebody to live in a new home?
You have to pay for them to live in it. You have to pay for a, uh, amendment.
A new home?
No, you're not, this isn't to pay for a home. This is to pay for the plan under which.
For somebody to live in a new home?
Well, for someone to be able to construct housing that will be affordable to people in certain income levels, yes. That is a mandate from the state of New Jersey.
That doesn't sound fair to me. I mean, why don't they just take the old home and then give us the new home?
You don't meet, you don't meet, you don't meet in some guidelines?
I, I can tell you why I'm not getting, so.
I, well, I'm just saying, that's my point, you know, it's like, it doesn't seem logical. Because everybody who moves in an old home couldn't afford a new home. But now we're living in the old home, and we're going to buy something, we're going to build a home for somebody else. It's not.
Well, we're not building a new home.
Well, in the end, we're, we're taking the expenses from their, their home, and we're paying it. Right?
No. No, you're allowing someone to build a development, and that development is going to have.
We're paying to build it, right?
We're paying to build it, your planner, to come up with the plan.
Play a new home. But if you buy a new home, you pay the closing cost, right?
You pay the closing cost. So.
Well, this is enough.
If you'd like, we can, we can have a thorough, in-depth discussion about this after the meeting.
I, I just think it's unfair. That's my opinion.
Will the, sir, will I have a little private question?
So this is true.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agendas. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated on as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by the certification of funds. If any member of council wants any re- resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be booked from the consent resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I call 2025-158.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution, uh, minus 125158, please?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its April 28th, 2025 meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, Resolution 2025-156, 157, and 159 through 169 now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were read in its entirety at its April 28th, 2025 meeting and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Potter, seconded by Council President Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Any discussion?
Councilman? Oh. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah.
No, we'll discuss your polled one after. We've not had consent. Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
No.
No, this is for the consent agenda, not for the one that you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilman Collins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-158 by title?
Authorizing Developers Agreement with Green Space Self-Storage LLC.
With pleasure, Councilman.
I'd like to make the motion that this, uh, resolution should be adopted. Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambrana. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions here. Uh, one is that they're being able to build a three-story building, and, uh, what does it say? They're getting a variance from the planning board to go up three stories. Is that correct?
They already have it.
They already have a.
This is an application that's been approved. All this is going to deal with is an obligation that they pay a share of the expense to get the electrical utility in a position to provide them with the electric they need for their project as well as another project that was approved approximately the same time.
Well, that brings up my next point. Why is, why are we paying some of their electrical costs?
Because we operate a municipal utility, because we are an electric company. This isn't their electric cost. This is the cost of improvements or actually a rebalancing of circuits in order to provide them with the electricity they need.
But if I have to rebalance the circuits at my house, do I have to pay?
This isn't, that, well, arguably, this is our house. This isn't on their property. So to the extent that this would be rebalancing the circuits on our property, they're paying for two-thirds of it.
Instead of us paying it all. So vote yes. I don't, I don't have a vote.
So I only have one question. Yes, sir. And I, I do understand that the background behind it. Of course. But, um, we just indicate authorizing the execution of Developers Agreement with GSI, but shouldn't that also include Heritage Plaza? Well, presently, the Heritage had an obligation. Heritage has not moved forward with their project. GSI is ready to move forward with their project. So GSI is agreeing to pay the per-tenant share attributable to the Heritage project. And should that ever go forward, the Bureau has indicated that they will make an attempt to get the per-tenant share from Heritage and then reimburse GSI for that. But rather than hold GSI up, we'll try to figure out a, another way to, to balance it. GSI has stepped up and said, we will pay that share, and if you can get it back, great. Otherwise, we're paying two, two-thirds because we want our project to go forward. My only question to that, my follow-up to that is if Heritage doesn't, uh, provide the financial expenditures for it, uh, what does the borough, what repercussions or recourse does the borough have? Is it a lien on the property? Is it? Well, here, right now Heritage, it's not a lien on the property because we haven't imposed anything on them because we don't know what they're going to do or not. So this is a, this is a what-if. But currently, we have an obligation to make best efforts to get that from them. We don't have an obligation to initiate litigation in order to get that from them uh, because we have the money from GSI. Okay. Okay. Beautiful. Thank you. You're welcome. Can I ask one question, Mr. McNoah? Of course. How long has this project been in, talked about? That I can't answer. I might need to defer to Mr. McClellan.
That I can't answer, I might need to defer to Mr. McClellan, because, yeah, at least five minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah. May I have a vote, please? Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
No.
Councilman, Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Thank you. Will the clerk please, please read Resolution twenty-two-five-one-seventy by title, please?
First, we're into the budget presentation.
Oh, it's just presentation. Sorry. Thanks.
Yes.
Good?
I'll check home because I have a picture.
Excellent.
All right, this is the two thousand and twenty-five municipal budget presentation. The Finance Committee is made up of the Chair, Council President Zambrana, Councilman Potter, and Councilman Poznanski, Administrator Fred Carr, and myself, Joe Zanga, the CFO. I want to thank everybody for input to getting to this final product. We met six times to go over the budget spending plan, we met with almost every department head on a few of those meetings to get their input on this budget. This is where your taxes go, this is the pie chart. The biggest section is the Board of Education, which makes up about sixty-one percent of your taxes. The blue section, light blue section, is our portion, which is about twenty-four percent of taxes, the county's about thirteen percent, county open space is one percent, and the library is one percent. Your total taxing authority is about thirty-point-five million dollars. Okay, this is what the municipal budget appropriations and revenues make up, mainly salaries and wages, other expenses, which is your departments, utilities, miscellaneous, contractual obligations, statutory expenditures, which is your pension bills and FICA employer portion, revenues mainly make up fees, fines, grants, state aid, which is energy receipts tax, which is the same number as last year, it did not increase from the state of New Jersey, and municipal property taxes. These are some of the, these are the services that are provided to the residents through the budget process, mainly police protection, garbage collection, recycling collection, storm cleanup, snow removal, parks and recreation, which is the pool also, code enforcement, building inspections, court services, animal control services, vital statistics, your Office and Agent Senior Center, public library, and your volunteer EMS service and fire protection. This is the pie chart of where your appropriations are distributed. On the left, it's salaries and wages, make up thirty-seven-point-two percent, other expenses make up thirty-point-six percent, up top, the library makes up three-point-two percent, state federal grants make up two-point-one percent, debt service and capital makes up eleven-point-two percent, statutory expenses, again, that's your pension bills and FICA tax makes up ten-point-six percent, and reserve uncollective taxes makes up five-point-one percent, that is the portion that we usually don't collect in the current year, which we'll collect the following year. Here's your two thousand and twenty-five municipal budget appropriations from last year to this year. The biggest mover in all the budgets, the current fund, the electric and water sewer fund, was insurance, medical benefits and health benefits and prescription costs. It went up significantly with the state of New Jersey, it went up significantly everywhere in New Jersey. In another town, I'm in a different health benefit program, they went up nineteen-point-something percent. So, this is something that has been a, a budget change in almost every town. Second line is library insurance, the town left one of the joint insurance funds and joined another joint insurance fund, so we, we were able to anticipate the savings in this year's budget. Let's see, P E R S, the fourth line down, P E R S, D C R P went down, the rate actually went down from the state of New Jersey, which was great, it was seventeen-point-six-one percent to seventy-point-one-one percent. For many, many years, it's been going up, this is the first year I've seen it go down, which is good for us, which was a benefit. The line that says bond, band principal went down, I don't know if anyone remembers, last year, we brought in additional revenue to try to pay down our bands quicker, because we were on the verge of having a bond sale, which would have cost us a lot more money, so we ended up bringing in more revenue to pay the bands down quicker, so that's why it looks like that went down one hundred and nineteen thousand, I'll show you on the next page where that offset. Library went up thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, that's statutory, we have no control over that. Utilities went up eleven thousand dollars, gas heat has gone, I'm sure people have seen at their homes how much their heating bill is nowadays, same thing with the borough. And salaries and wages at the bottom is a little more than two percent. Next page is revenues. Okay, a lot of, some of the revenues did stay level, but some of the revenues that did not hit their target projections in two thousand and twenty-four were decreased, that's what you'll see in red, and some of them increased, other lines that, that we received more, we increased. But on the one, two, three, four, fifth line down, where you see that negative eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, that is offset with the expenditure that I showed you on the other page from the band principal, and also down the bottom, where it says surplus, it looks like there's a large amount that says seven-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. In two thousand and twenty-four, we were almost forced to, to use a different line item to help balance the budget, now this year it's back into surplus. So, if you take those two numbers, one on the page prior, the surplus number that says seven-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, less the eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, it's almost even. Where it says state aid, energy receipts tax, probably two-thirds the way down the page, negative forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, this was the municipal relief aid that the state came up with for two straight years, it ended in two thousand and twenty-four, so that's why that shows a negative of forty thousand dollars. The energy receipts tax is the same number as last year. Local purpose tax down the bottom, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars is a two-point-three percent increase, and again, like the last page, the local library tax is thirteen-four-sixty-one, that is statutory. Next page is your water sewer budget. Total budget was four million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. This budget includes the rates that were authorized in December of two thousand and twenty-four. The water sewer budget was not self-liquidating, which means revenues did not support operations, it just barely missed it, though it was off by about thirteen hundred dollars, so it was very close, but it did not hit its, its target last year. On the operations side, I mean, water sewer rents, one thing, water sewer rents do make up the majority of your budget, it's about ninety-three percent of revenue comes from, from buildings to residents. On the operations side, your expenses are general expenses, clerical meter readers, operating services, licensed operator, which is PACE, which is required by law, debt service, and you purchase water from New Brunswick and sewers treated from New Brunswick. In the electric utility fund, total budget is eight million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eighty-two dollars. This also was not self-liquidating. We did pass electric rates this year, that was, that was to help balance this year's budget. Everybody, I don't know if everyone has been reading the paper, but everybody in New Jersey is seeing a large increase, all of the major IOUs, they're called, investor-owned utilities had about twenty percent increases, and last year they had about eight percent increases, so this has been seen everywhere throughout New Jersey, and even up and down the East Coast. A lot of it is due to the market for capacity transmission. The market really dictates how much everything is increasing, and the last increase on June first was about five times what the borough was paying prior, which is very significant. Now, one thing we're gonna try to do, we're out to bid for a battery storage project, so one thing we're gonna try to do to mitigate these costs in the future is try to do a battery storage project if the price is coming favorable to the borough, and this will help offset these increases in transmission capacity, because right now, from what I'm reading in the future, there's no certainty on what these prices are gonna be also going forward. It's like the stock market, when there's uncertainty in a market, and they go out to bid for these type of services, it just goes up and down, and right now it's going up significantly, so to try to mitigate that in the future, hopefully a battery storage project will work. Next page, capital improvements planned for this year. Roads, I know we have a DOT grant for Northbrook Drive two, Phase two, curb cuts and sidewalk improvements, parks and playgrounds we usually do, purchasing vehicles, Albert Avenue Bike Bath Phase two, there was a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar grant received for that, electric bucket truck possibly, improvements to the utility system, we're always trying to upgrade poles, wires, transformers, water sewer pipes, and as aforementioned, battery storage project. So, in summary, the general budget, the tax increase on an assessed value, assessment of a home of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents will see sixty-four dollars and twelve cents annually. There's no reduction in municipal services, and infrastructure improvements anticipated. Water sewer budget, as mentioned prior, we had a rate increase in December, we had, we had rates approved in December of twenty-four, no reduction in any services there, infrastructure improvements anticipated, and the electric fund, we had the rate increase effective April first, no reduction in services, infrastructure improvements anticipated. So, again, I'd like to thank the Finance Committee and Fred for their input in this, and, take any questions if you have any. Councilman?
Just a second. I'd just like to run something by you, and this is, in essence, what we would want from Milltown in the future. If Milltown was financially stable, would it be a viable plan to have an encumbrance, money that can only be used for a particular item, for instance, a fire truck, garbage truck, or police vehicle, et cetera? We could have a five-year plan, an appropriation, setting money aside for these items of need. I understand that with the lack of taxes collected, especially from the owners of Fort Avenue site, it precludes sending a plan such as this in motion. Because of past governance, we owe almost thirty, thirty million dollars in tax, in, in obligations, almost seven million uncollected tax revenue from Fort Avenue, it's, it's, this is not an ideal situation, around as much as the tax revenue for the year. My point is, instead of budgeting for our needs, we have to solicit bonds for adding to our debt. Would you, would you say that if we were at some point caught up, that you have a plan, still like a five-year plan, so you're setting aside money every year, instead of bonding, for bonds, you have a situation set up, so you have money?
In your budget, there's a six-year plan, but yes, that's, that's, in another town, I mean, that's what we, we did, but you have to get to that point first to start doing it.
Right, and I know we're not there.
We're not there, exactly. So, what we did in another town is we took savings from projects, like a battery storage project, and we started taking those savings and started doing other work in town to offset costs, and now we start, we started to do projects in cash instead of bonding for it. So, we took that savings, lowered electric rates, and also purchased a fire truck, paved a lot of roads, we do other work with those profits, and then give it back to the town that way.
Sure.
So.
That's what I'm saying, I understand.
It's a good idea, we just gotta get to that point.
We'd like to make.
Yeah, if we get to that point, that'd be great, if we just have, yeah, usually, right now it's through taxation, is the way to get to it, but if you can have a project, say like a battery, or something that generates a profit, you can then take that profit to the council or Finance Committee, decide what to do with that profit.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You did a good job, though.
Thanks, thanks, Councilman. Thank you.
May I have a motion in a second by council, please?
Motion.
Second. Resolution twenty-five one seventy.
I didn't read it yet, though.
Will the clerk please read Resolution twenty-two-five one seventy by title?
Authorizing the reading of the calendar year twenty-two-five budget by title.
What's the question? I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? No, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution twenty-two-five-one-seventy-one by title?
Twenty-two-five municipal budget adoption.
What's the pleasure, Council?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Reports of elected officials, Council President Zambrana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only short report that I have tonight is to thank Mr. Carr and Mr. Zanga for all their work, their hard work, both part-time professionals here, made the time, I want to say, consecutive Thursdays, we got together for a couple hours, you know, had department heads come in, and bounced off a lot of things around the table. So, again, can't say enough, appreciate all the work that you've done to bring in this budget, first of all, to have it submitted in March, to have it adopted in April, not like last year, where it's like two months late, that's not the way you want to do it, you want to do it this way every single year. Thank you.
Councilman Collins?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of reports, one's a little longer than normal. First, I'll do the library report, forgot it last time, sorry. Tuesday, April twenty-ninth and May sixth, at three p.m., game out, game on, after-school video gaming. Wednesday, April thirtieth, two p.m., movie matinee, Worthington Heights. Thursday, May first, craft at noon, create your own craft and supplies, that's Thursday, May first, three p.m. Monday, May fifth, nine a.m., yoga for adults. Wednesday, May seventh, movie matinee, Easy Rider. Thursday, May eighth, three p.m., after-school Jeopardy. Saturday, May tenth, eleven a.m., crochet. The library will have a table for Earth Day on Saturday, May tenth, at Mill Pond Park. And some of the walls are being painted this, this week, and in case anybody has problems with the paint, you should try to avoid the situation. Again, Earth Day is May tenth, they put a flyer out, I printed it, we can see it, May tenth, ten to three, at Mill Pond Park. I had a letter here from the Environmental Commission about an adjunct grant, the introduction says, "The Middlesex County Open Space, located at eighty-seven Washington Avenue in Milltown, presents a valuable natural asset for the community situated to an adjacent ice cream shop encompassing flowing trees, circular garden bed, and naturalized wooded section towards Lawrence Brook. While many people visit the ice cream stand, the open space has experienced an unfortunate degree of neglect, resulting in underutilization of its potential as a vibrant community resource and ecological habitat. Recognizing this opportunity, Milltown Environmental Commission proposes a comprehensive revitalization project to enhance the ecological value and accessibility of this important public space through volunteer efforts and strategic improvements. Project description: This project focuses on two key areas of enhancement within the Middlesex County Open Space, restoration and circular garden, the ecological improvement in the tree canopy, and understory. Garden restoration, the existing seven-hundred-foot square garden bed originally established as a native pollinator garden through William Bradford's two-hundred-and-sixty, two thousand and sixteen eco-project has unfortunately become dominated by invasive, non-invasive species such as mugwort and fountain grass, you can't read some of these, I don't know how to pronounce them, I'm sorry. Despite the previous efforts, these resilient plants persist, diminishing the intended ecological benefits to the garden. To address this, the Milltown Department of Public Works has generously agreed to undertake the necessary excavation to remove the invasive plants following a critical step. Our primary goal is to replant the garden bed with diverse section of native perennial herbicidal, herbaceous plants and shrubs. Careful, trusted, curated, planning and design to attract a wide array of natural pollinators, including insects, birds, which provide appeal and educational opportunities to ensure the long success of this endeavor will collaborate with Middlesex County Master Clean Gardener to obtain expert advice on proper soil remediation techniques and selection of advantageous deer-resistant plants suitable for the site's sunny conditions. Tree canopy and understory enhancement, the open space tree is currently facing significant challenge, first, mature flowers and trees will remain standing detracting from the aesthetic ecological integrity of our plan. Our plan includes the dead trees replacement, species chosen for the environmental benefits and suitability of the ecosystem. And what do we have to do for this adjunct grant? Fred, we have to get a proposal on this, put it upon the agenda?
So, I would say yes, if this, since this is the first I've heard of it, that would be a good start. I guess, if they have some information, they can email it to us, and if it's something that goes into Sage or what, I'm not sure.
That's, excuse me, that's a fifteen-hundred-dollar.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Barford Bright, thirty-eight Harrison Avenue.
Barbara Wright, 38, Harrison Avenue, member of the Environmental Commission. This is by grant proposal. What I need from counsel by the next council meeting would be a letter, a counsel letter of support. I'm applying through ANJEC, which is our organization, we belong to, the Environmental Commission, for a fifteen hundred dollar grant, no matching fund, and I just need a counsel letter of support.
That's easy.
That the council supports this application.
Okay. We could do that, Fred?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can send that information to me, and we can go from there.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Let's see what I got for the rest of these. Don't forget, Milltown Day is May 10th, 2025, 10 to 3. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have a Councilman make this report? No? Okay, Councilman Mary.
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Poznanski?
Yes, this is the Senior Center first, Monday, May 12th, 11:30 bus trip, Stage House in Somerset. Monday, May 12th, 9:30 bus trip to Ollie's and Trader Joe's. Tuesday, May 20th, 10:45 bus trip to the Shrimp Box. Tuesday, May 27th, 11:30 bus trip to Zinnia's Bistro. And events, Tuesday, May 13th, 1:30, a presentation by Milltown Rescue Squad. Thursday, May 22nd, at 1 o'clock, a Q and A with Police Officer Olazinski. The V and A nurse will be here Tuesday, May 20th, for appointments, 12 to 3. This is a free service to seniors. And they also have weekly lunch provided by Elijah's Promise, Wednesdays at 12:30. And for the DPW report, I had a meeting with Ralph Poznanski. The old DPW site was discussed, there are areas that can be remediated, such as the concrete barriers, storage boxes, general cleanup, et cetera. But for the most part, the majority of council will have to come up with and agree on a plan. The Schwenningman property was discussed, the DPW is still waiting on decisions from the committee as to how to proceed, other than mowing, trimming bushes, general maintenance, et cetera. The rotting deck and the disposition of it is a question mark, as is the shed. The heating and air conditioning at the DPW and now the firehouses is still not resolved after all these months. In winter, the inside temperature was 40 degrees, now the temperature is 80 degrees. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Potter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few announcements from the Milltown Recreation Department. The youth tennis soccer and multi-sports programs commenced this past weekend with high registration numbers. The musical theater program began its next session of Annie on April 22nd, with the final showcase scheduled for June 10. The new adult Pilates program started last week with 29 registrants. This is a fantastic addition to Milltown's office. Interviews for the Borough Pool will begin this week, followed by interviews for Albert Avenue Summer Camp, once the pool interviews are completed. Registration for Albert Avenue and CIT programs start on May 13th and end on June 15th. Albert Avenue Camp is scheduled to begin on Monday, June 30. The Adult Coed Softball League started this evening, with the championship game set for Thursday, June 12. Borough Pool memberships will be available for purchase starting on May 13. To buy your badge, please visit Community Pass. Another drawing session will be held at the Senior Center in mid-June, please visit Community Pass to register. To book Albert Avenue Park, please contact Recreation Department to reserve your day. Once the date has been confirmed, you can fill out the application online. The annual Spotswood High School Boys Baseball Game will take place on Tuesday, May 6th, at Michelin Field. The Spotswood Heights School Girls Softball Game will be played at Borough Park on Thursday, May 8. Please come out and show your support. From the Planning Board, the next meeting is scheduled for May 7th. And from the Milltown Fourth of July Organization, with less than three months away from the big day, the Milltown Fourth of July Organization thanks everyone for their continued support. Don't forget to participate in our Super 50-50 Raffle, limited tickets are still available. And if you wish to be a sponsor or participate in the parade, please visit our Milltown Fourth of July website or follow us on Facebook and Instagram. And Mr. Mayor, I have a closing report.
Thank you. Reports of our professionals, Peter Vignola.
No report, Senator.
Thank you. Borough Engineer, Luke.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First off, a status report of the water meter replacement project. To date, 1,036 replacements have been completed. That's an additional 155 since the last council meeting. 16 others are complete and are being validated, 43 are incomplete, and 516 replacements are currently scheduled. Secondly, with regard to the Northbrook Drive improvement, we're happy to report that the curbs and sidewalks have been completed and milling and paving is tentatively scheduled for next week, weather permitting. And that concludes our report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Borough staff, business administration, Greg Carter.
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few things, Election Day deadline reminders. May 20th is the deadline to register to vote. Forms are available in the Clerk's office as well as online. June 3rd is the deadline to apply for mail-in ballot. Early voting will be June 6th through June 8th. And Primary Election Day has been moved to Tuesday, June 10th. Voting will still be 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. District 3 and District 4 voters, you will be getting a postcard to your house indicating the change in polling location. District 3 will be voting here at Borough Hall, and District 4 will be back at Joyce Comer School. Garage sale permits for the unofficial garage sale are due by Thursday, so that I can email the organizer everyone who's applied and paid for a permit. And our next meeting, May 12th, is our youth and government meeting, so I hope everybody tunes in to see our JK students run a meeting, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council? So, no? Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council?
I'm sorry, what did you say, the garage sales?
Thursday by close, this Thursday by close of business.
For the permit?
For the permit for the unofficial.
What's the unofficial date?
It's this weekend, coming up.
This weekend coming up?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Thanks.
Thank you. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from every comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of the meeting should be limited to five-minute period, and may, after other speakers have finished, be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period.
Lee Weis, 99 JFK Drives. I'm going to ask the council for a little bit of help tonight, and the mayor. This is concerning Mill Pond, Lawrence Brook, below the dam. I've been investigating the ownership of that for a long time. Right now, it's on the tax maps that we own it. Till last week, I have found no evidence anywhere that we own it. This is a serious problem. I'm asking this council tonight to show the taxpayers in this town a verifiable instrument that Milltown owns those two properties. It's Block 8601-1 and Block 3201, Lot 1. I've gotten criticism from the past. I engaged last week with the Fort Avenue Redevelopment Agency somewhat. Simple question, who owns the pond? I've had it up to here. The taxpayers want to know, people are asking me, please tell us. If we took ownership of that pond, and that belongs to the dam too, we're in trouble. Because we're going to be paying for stuff that we shouldn't be paying for. So if this has occurred, please explain it to the taxpayers. This should only take a few minutes. I'll explain that too, because you can poke up the county property records, put your name in there, you can look up your deed in minutes. There is no documentation pertaining to this. Our tax assessor, there's no record of this. It shows up on the tax books, 2020 or so, there's no documentation with it. There's nothing to verify this. Like I said, it's been dragging out, it's getting serious, we need to know. That's all I'm going to say tonight, appreciate it.
Can you please repeat the lot and block?
8601 is the block number, Lot 1 is Mill Pond.
Okay.
3201, Lot 1 is Lawrence Brook below the dam.
Thank you.
They go together. And I'm confused by this, and I'll go more. 2013, big year, Planning Board grants Mr. Boray permission for preliminary approval of his site plan application. He presents the board with the title search. Who owns it? Also, Mr. Berger. That's it. Since then, nothing has changed. He's in a lot of court cases and stuff, but property has not exchanged. Nothing has gone on. It seems simple, but it gets complicated every day, for some reason. And so, like I said, we need to fix this. Because we're going to be in big trouble here, in more ways than one. And like I said, something has transpired from 2013 till now? Please, somebody explain this. There's transcribed meetings from the Planning Board, 2013, when they get the approval, several months in a row. Anybody can read this, it's on the website. So I'm passing it on now, because it has to be resolved. Because there's serious consequences here. And that's it, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's it? Anyone else?
There you go.
Barbara Wright, 38, Harrison Avenue. So I'll just tell you again about the grant application. I'm on the Environmental Commission, and we do the pollinator garden at Mill Pond, and we're having a cleanup this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. Anybody who wants to come help us work in the garden, we're welcome to do that. The other application, and this is nice to go along with the Girl Scouts project, because it's good for there to be a pollinator pathway. And so, they're putting up pollinator plants at the Senior Center, and we have them down at Mill Pond Park and at the library. And then, what we're hoping is to redo Will's Pollinator Garden up at the open space on Washington Avenue. And so, yeah, I have, this is, I guess you all understand already, but I'm putting in an application for 1,500 dollars, which will cover the cost of plants for the circular garden. And we're going to get perennials, so that you don't have to replant them. And they should be plants that won't require a lot of water and won't need a lot of maintenance. There's a couple of trees that died, so we want to replace those with native trees, native flowering trees, as best. And some of the trees that are up there need help, because there's vines growing on them. And we need to kind of take off that original fencing that was around those trees and remove the vines, so that they don't take away from that. So we just want to spruce up the open space a little bit. And this grant can help us do that. And I'm hoping that we can also lay down a path just to the garden, where there's a bench there. And so, it'll make it accessible for people with accessibility issues to get to the bench, so that they can appreciate the garden. And that's the whole plan. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else? No? I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Does any member of council have any comments?
Yes, I do. First, I'd like to recognize Chief Fama. I appreciate everything you do, and I appreciate your commitment to fighting the wildfires. Very heroic, and I'm sure we all appreciate that. So thank you very much. I'm going to start this for Fred Carr. Mr. Carr, I appreciate you being here tonight, I understand your busy schedule. With that said, is there some way that we can accommodate you to ensure your presence at our council meetings? And I'd like to ask you to change your meeting nights temporarily, would help you, in your appearance. And your feedback is crucial, in my opinion. Since you have been and still are helping Milltown in our times of need, it only makes sense to accommodate you as best that we can. And I'll say this again, I appreciate you for the stability that you gave us last year through all the confusion and the chaos. And I thank you.
Counsel, I mean, thank you for the effort, but, you know, changing the council meeting nights to accommodate just moi is a little extreme, you know, it's a positive stroke, I appreciate that. But I look very favorable on the fact that I have a conflict and I only have to go to one meeting. You know, it's being self-serving, and so, but, you know, but the council, you know, when there is no meeting in Spotswood, I am here. As you all know, this month, they changed the schedule, and I don't know if the council wants to change the meeting schedule in Milltown, just so that Fred can be here, if that's okay with me, if you change it, but I think that's...
I just thought of what you've done for us, what you've been doing for us, that we can do that, at a minimum.
Ah, I don't think you need to get crazy.
I also have something from Mr. Vignola. I'd like to thank you for stepping up in some of the difficulty of our last meeting. Even though I may not have been in complete agreement with you, in retrospect, I appreciate that you took initiative, as no one else weighed in. Being that we use the term Robert's Rules to make it more understandable for people. These are our bylaws, in essence, our laws, that we follow. It's understandable that you do not need to know Robert's Rules like a Bible, however, there are those that need to. The mayor needs to know our bylaws better than anyone else. He should have weighed in last week, instead of leaving you to make decisions that were his to make. It is also true that we do not always follow our bylaws. I do, and I do have a problem when others don't. The law is not an idea or suggestion, it is to be followed, and that is what the citizens and the taxpayers expect. And I have another, two small things. I have a short retrospect from our last council meeting, and some council members commenting. This is not a rehash, but rather a perspective. For those that do not know me, and those that do, this is me. On my first day as a councilman last January, before the meeting began, I went up to then-councilmen Potter and Zambranne, saying to each quietly shaking their hand, I said, "I don't want you to feel alone here." I did this because their party was now the minority, and I told them that, "I vote my conscience." This year, Councilwoman Payne joined us on the day, I welcomed her warmly. First, I went to her and offered her a flag lapel pin, which she graciously accepted. I got the idea to do this, because Council President Zambranne gave me a lapel pin on my first day. I thought it was an honorable gesture then, and I decided to do the same. I would also like to read comments I made on Councilwoman Payne's first day. I'd like to welcome our newest councilperson, Pat Payne. She brings varied experience and attributes. She's an educator and an attorney, she has integrity, cares about her community, and to me, most importantly, she is a proud mother of two exceptional sons. With that said, nothing else can top that. And one last thing here. I would like to thank Councilwoman Payne for the idea to run for the school board. There's so much that I would do to bring about accountability and responsibility in the position. My voice and my ideas will be heard every meeting. For instance, I would champion merit-based pay raises, and voicing that would be consistent. I'm sure the taxpayers would want to know that they are paying for the best teachers. That would hopefully ensure that their children would have the best education we could provide for them, so that they may have the confidence to make use of their God-given intelligence and be successful. A 25th percentile out of 100 in any educational or scholastic graphic is unacceptable. This needs to change, and I hope parents and taxpayers are going to make their voices heard. Again, I thank Councilwoman Payne for her idea regarding my future. The only area that she was mistaken was when she stated, "When my term is over." Terms is a plural usage. That would be running for a second term on council and/or continue on and run for mayor. And I am done.
Thank you, I have no comments.
Mr. Mayor, just have two quick comments. First of all, just to remind all the residents, this Wednesday, the Mobile DMV will be at the Senior Center. Even though real IDs, all the slots were taken, I heard they were taken within minutes, but that's all over the state. But they do have other services, if you have to turn in license plates, registration, all that information, please, go ahead and visit the Mobile DMV. And we're also looking to get them back in Milltown in July. And also too, Monica, the next meeting is May 12th, correct?
Yes, sir.
I believe the day before is Mother's Day. So I would like to wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day. And that's it.
I'd like to reiterate, Counsel- I'd like to reiterate, Councilman Potter, that you have a Happy Mother's Day to all the residents. And I'll also say, if, I think a good idea was, if you want to criticize the board a bit, try going over and substitute teaching, and then come back to the meeting, because that's what we should do. And if you want, I'll pay for the license. That's it.
Okay, I'll close. Counsel comments? I have any comments? Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-172, please?
Enter an executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, public of 1975, Chapter 231, permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas its public bodies have the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss pending litigation, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, will the public be excluded from this meeting?
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambranan. Is there any comments? May I have a vote, please?
Council President Zambranan?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Okay.